Everyone, glad to see you here tonight for our May 14th, 2024 council meeting. We proceed each meeting with a word of prayer, the pledge of allegiance. If you would like to join us, please feel free. Ms. Isby, could I get you to word our prayer?
You'll bow with me. Our gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for all the blessings that you've given us. We thank you, Lord, for being stewards of this city that you have so graciously blessed us with. We just ask, Lord, that everything that we do will be to your glory. And we just ask that you watch over us and keep us and make us very mindful of the decisions that we make. And at the end, that you give the glory that you're so deserving of. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. A pledge of allegiance to the five of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We now call this meeting to order. Mr. Garrett, would you call the rolls, sir?
Mr. Grimes?
Here.
Mr. Cummins?
Here.
Ms. Mel?
Here.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Here.
Ms. Webb?
Here.
Mr. Jones?
Here.
Ms. Isby?
Here.
Okay, you should have received copies of the minutes from the April 23rd, 24th, 25th council meeting. Any corrections, changes, or comments?
Make a motion for approval.
Have a motion and a second to approve the amendments submitted for April 23rd. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Seven to zero. I think Mr. Whittingham sent out a quarterly report to each of you. Uh, Dr. Fiddler, are you here tonight? Okay. First up, we have a public hearing, uh, discuss an ordinance to approve the issuance of bonds for water revenue improvement for Conway Corporation. On there, uh, now I'll declare this public hearing open. Anyone that'd like to speak for this, if you would, state your name and address for the record. And likewise, if anyone likes to speak against.
Well, good evening, Council Mayor. Uh, my name is Brett Carroll, 330 Conway Boulevard. Um, and I'm speaking for, um, the water bond issuance. As you may know, our board approved, uh, this issuance back in April. Um, and, um, Tom Corwell was able to sign that. I'm glad that he, he, he was able to decide. He's been a very strong advocate for, playing for the future for Conway. And he served our board of directors for 14 years. So we're, I just want to acknowledge the work that he did and encouragement that he gave us. But anyway, um, this issuance will allow us to expand our water, our current water treatment plant, the Roger Cumeo's Water Treatment Plant, from 24 million gallons a day to 32 million gallons a day. And as you guys know, we're actively working on a long-term water supply for our city. And if you, if you can't treat it, if you have inadequate treatment capacity, having more water doesn't do you a lot of good. So that's what this will do for us. Um, it will not result in a rate increase. We paid off some debt in December of 2023 that had an equivalent debt service, uh, payment every year. So it will not result in a, in a rate increase. Um, and I just want to thank, uh, there's some, some gentlemen behind me who worked on this, Brett McDaniel, Dale Gotts, Hunter Mark Ferguson, uh, who've been very active on this project and got it to the point where, uh, we could bring it to this, to this body for a decision. Um, but I, I want to thank them for the work that they've done. And, uh, and, and I also want to introduce Gordon Wilburn. He's going to speak, uh, about, uh, the specifics of the, the financing and the documents that this body needs to, needs to consider for approval.
Thank you, Mr. Carroll.
Council members, Gordon Wilburn, Keytak Rock, uh, law firm, bond counsel on this issue. Um, I'm glad you're reading by title only tonight because you see how long this ordinance is. This is a state mandated form where they set forth all the monthly payments in the actual body of the ordinance. Uh, you have some very favorable money here from the state. Um, $31 million, I think, has an all-in rate of one and three-quarter percent. That has a servicing fee that comes to that amount. Then the seven million is, uh, just, uh, loan forgiveness money. Uh, so you don't even repay that. So it doesn't get any better than that. Um, I'm happy to answer any questions. But, uh, the ordinance approves the issuance of those two bonds, which the state is going to buy, and the bond purchase agreements for each.
And just to be clear, for us in the public, these bonds will be repaid by Conway Corporation, not the City of Conway, right?
Well, they are issued by the City of Conway, but their water revenue solely secured, right? They're not a general obligation of the city.
The city's not repaying them. Conway Corporation's repaying them with water revenue.
Water revenue, correct.
And water rates do not change.
That's correct.
Thank you, Mr. Wil. Thank you, Gordon.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak for or against? Okay, Councilman, this is very important for the future of Conway. We have a number of businesses that are looking at our city and, uh, our, our use of water is just going to continue to go up. So I appreciate Conway Corporation being forward thinking on this. Okay, we'll declare this public hearing closed, and they will move to the next item. See, economic development, we have consideration to approve waiving all three readings for the ordinance on the May 14th council agenda. Those ordinances tonight are, B2, which is an ordinance to approve the issuance of bonds for water revenue improvements for Conway Corporation. C1, which is an ordinance to approve an agreement with Unity, uh, franchise for the use of public right-of-way for the City of Conway. And then E3, which is an ordinance waiving bid process and appropriating funds for SCBA bottles for the Conway Fire Department. But with that, I will take a motion to, uh, to waive all three readings.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to waive all three readings for tonight's council meeting. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? That's a seven, zero. First up is an ordinance to approve the issuance of bonds for water revenue improvements for Conway Corporation. We've heard that. So unless you have any questions for, uh, Mr. Carroll or Mr. Wilburn, back to you, Council.
Make a motion for the adoption of the ordinance, and I have it, Mr. Garrett, as O2436.
Have a motion and a second to adopt this ordinance, uh, approve resolution. I'm sorry. Yes, for the bonds for refinancing, acquisition, instruction of industrials. No, I'm on the wrong one. My bad. I missed a page. Uh, ordinance to approve the issuance of bond for water revenue improvements for Conway Corporation. Now I got it right. Mr. Garrett?
Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Aye.
Mr. Cummins?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Aye.
Ms. Isby?
Yes.
Ms. Mel?
Aye.
All right, that passes seven, zero. Next up, we have a resolution, uh, to approve the issuance of bonds for industrial facility located in Conway. Do we know who was just going to speak to this? Yeah, come on up, Gordon.
Thank you. Speaking of this one too, uh, this, you've done this before. It's just an inducement resolution, resolution, non-binding, uh, to give the company some comfort that, uh, you would assist with a, a payment in lieu of tax arrangement. Uh, they would come back to you with an ordinance to actually approve those terms. But this is kind of a first step in that process. You may have read about this, uh, project in the paper today, I think was, uh, in there. I think it's, uh, 40 jobs, $42 million cold storage facility.
Council, that will be, uh, an area of where the old airport used to be.
Make a motion for the adoption of the resolution. I have it as R2422.
I have a motion and a second to approve the resolution for the issuance of bonds for an industrial facility. Any further discussion? The gentleman that's doing this, he, doesn't he own the Eight Mile Store?
I'm sorry?
Doesn't he own the Eight Mile Store?
You know, I don't know that.
Okay.
Is that right?
Okay. Any further discussion? Mr. Garrett?
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
That passes seven, zero. Y'all gonna have to listen to me tonight on community development. Mr. Hawkins is in here. Thank you, Gordon. Next up, we have an ordinance approving an agreement with Unity Franchise for Public Right-of-Way for the Use of Telecommunication Services for the City of Conway. And I think Unity is represented tonight. You would, for the record, sir, would you please state your name?
Uh, Donald Cooper with Uni Fiber. Good evening. Uh, this is just, uh, asking for you to allow us to have a franchise agreement with the City of Conway, so we expand our fiber network into your municipality to serve customers, to serve mainly businesses.
I think Mr. Rice has been working with, with you from the city, and I appreciate Troy, your, your work.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
I have a question for you. So, uh, will this be citywide? Or I know it's a right-of-way, so are we discussing a right-of-way citywide?
Uh, yes, sir. Yes, sir. So be able to, uh, for us to build in your city right-of-ways. Yes, sir.
Okay, and it's mainly for businesses?
Yes, sir. We are currently just serving businesses at the moment.
Okay, thank you.
All right, yes, sir.
Council, back to you.
Make a motion for the adoption of the ordinance, O2437.
I have a motion and a second to approve the ordinance for the agreement with Unity Franchise. Any further discussion? Mr. Garrett?
Ms. Mel? Mr. Ledbetter? Mr. Grimes? Ms. Isby?
Yes.
Mr. Cummins? Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Passes, passes seven to zero. There's so many right-of-ways in Conway. I want to make sure I understood that. Next up, we have a resolution to approve the grant submission of the Energy Efficiency Conservation Block Grant for the City of Conway. And we have Robbie Albertson up.
Good evening, Council. Um, Department of Energy has released a funding opportunity named the Energy Efficiency and Conservation Block Grant Program. Fortunately, Conway is eligible for up to $125,490, and that's non-matching funds. So we are wanting to apply for those funds and submit an application by October 31st. Um, the plan, uh, is to install around eight units of rectangular rapid flashing beacon. So like the beacons that's on Donaghy, um, where you push the button and it flashes for you. So those locations are still to be determined, but we think this, this project will definitely increase pedestrian safety in our city.
Yeah, they get your attention.
Yeah.
Any questions for Mr. Albertson, Council? Yeah.
Make a motion for the adoption of the resolution, R2423.
I have a motion and a second to adopt this resolution for submission for the EECBG grant for the City of Conway. Any further discussion? Mr. Garrett?
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
That's seven, zero. Next, we have the Public Service Committee. And we have a resolution to approve entering into a landscape and maintenance agreement for the Public Works Department. Mr. Clausen is here to speak to this.
Good evening. What's that time of year again? You've probably noticed the flowers have gone up. And, uh, we need to put some water on them. So we're looking to enter into an agreement with Wheel Candy again. That's to be watering this year.
I have a motion and a second to approve the resolution to enter into an agreement for landscape and maintenance. Any further discussion? He does a good job on that, too.
He's fine job, yes, sir.
He has. He's got down to an art. Mr. Garrett?
All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed?
That's a seven to zero. Thank you, Spencer.
Thank you.
Wow, that was good. Last item on the agenda tonight is the ordinance to approve the waiving of a bid process and appropriating funds for SCBA bottles for the Conway Fire Department. Chief Winter?
Good evening, mayor and council. We're asking to waive the bid process for us to purchase bottles for our air packs.
This sole source vendor, I understand, mine?
It is. It's the only dealer in the state, though not only in the state, they're also here in Conway.
Make a motion for the adoption of the ordinance along with the emergency clause as O2438.
Have a motion and a second to adopt this ordinance with the emergency clause. Any further discussion? Are y'all, y'all using Scott now, my, or?
Yes.
Okay. Survive air was a thing back in the day, wasn't it, Ledbetter? Mr. Garrett?
Ms. Mel?
Aye.
Ms. Webb?
Aye.
Mr. Grimes?
Aye.
Mr. Cummins?
Yes.
Ms. Isby?
Yes.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
And Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Those both pass seven to zero. Thank you, chief. That's all we have tonight. Mr. Cummins, you want to say something?
I want to tell Mr. Carroll that I've pretty exciting reading that 20 pages of the bond issues, and I've read every page.
I'm so glad you said that.
Counsel? Yes, sir. Counsel this week is National Police Officers Week, and we will have a, an event, I think it's at 5:30 PM Friday afternoon, right out here, I'm sorry, Thursday, Thursday afternoon, right out here at the Simon Park. Did I give the right time, James? Is it five or 5:30? 5:30, okay, 5:30, good. So we'd love for you to attend. Got a great police department in the city of Conway. With that, I will take a motion to adjourn.
Sound move.
We're adjourned. Thank you, everyone.